Let's start the meeting. I think that, let me read it. The Plymouth zoning board adjustment will meet in an E-meeting Tuesday at April 6th, 2:21 at 7:00 PM at the Plymouth Town Hall to consider the following agenda. Now, we got a suggested disclaimer here they want me to read. In accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 22004, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Information and connection links to the meeting are provided on the Town of Plymouth website and at www.plymouthnehampshire.org. And it's got a Zoom link. We usually do the pledge of allegiance, but I don't think that's appropriate with how few people in the television set. So we'll just move on and we'll call a meeting to order. Slam. Do a roll call of members present. We have David Kent, Stephanie Alton.
Yeah.
Butch Cushing.
Present.
Tom McGlaughlin, present. And Patrice Scott is absent tonight. We also have the TOP staff, Town of Plymouth staff, June Hammond Rowan and Juliet Harvey Folia. The next item on the agenda is reorganization of board members. And we're going to, I'd like to make a motion that we've put that off until the end of this meeting. Does anybody second that motion?
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to put that off until the end of the meeting. We'll revisit that. And we got a review of the minutes of November 3rd, 2020. Boy, that's been a while since we had a meeting.
Yes, it has.
Man. Well, we'll probably pay for the next six months. Things are looking pretty busy out there. Okay, does anybody have any comments about the minutes? I see they did get your request there, Dave, right?
Yes, they did.
That'd be 40 feet from the sidewalk.
Yep, and she was very nice to go back into the record and make sure that that was what was voted upon. So I appreciate that.
Oh, great, okay. And they also got my comment about the junkyards in town, too. I appreciate that. Any other questions on the minutes?
Make a motion, we accept the minutes.
Motion to accept, any second.
Stephanie's seconded.
Stephanie's raising her hand, right?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so Stephanie seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Okay, we're moving right on. Public hearing. Oh, any communications received by the board? Nope, we'll move right on to the public hearing. Request for a special exception from Mount Prospect Academy at 339 Main Street, PID 209078, to operate an educational institution at this property. Educational uses in this zone are permitted by special exception. The property lies in the highway commercial zone. And we have the applicant for 339 Main Street, Mount Prospect Academy.
Yes, Jay Marshall.
Great.
Head of schools for Mount Prospect Academy.
Okay. I'm sorry, I kind of missed that. Did you hear that?
Head of schools for Mount Prospect Academy.
Oh, okay, excellent. Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Can you tell us about your project?
Um, yes, we have purchased the property at 339 Main Street. And we've, Lacy Hunt, our main instructor and maintenance team has done some renovations with the building, improving, so a fire alarm system has been added, exit signs, and then cosmetics in terms of paint and some, we did pull permit for a bathroom renovation to put in an ADA compliant bathroom. We have no plans to change the outside of the building. We, I believe that, and Lacy can speak to it, but Lacy submitted plans to use the existing sign that's on the outside of the building. And Lacy's worked with our electrician to identify the products that we'd be using in relation to signage and lighting in accordance with Plymouth zoning.
Very nice. Can everybody hear him all right, Butch? Everybody hearing this guy good? Good. And, well. Hey, what else can you say? Anything special here?
Yeah, well, I, yes, so with, with the pandemic, we have a number of students who are what we call day students. And so they, they attend school with us, but they live at home with their families. The large majority of our students live in our dormitories. And, and so to protect them during the pandemic, we've switched our day students to remote learning. And, and they've done a very good job and stayed connected. And, and, but we want to get them back. I think we've met educational needs, but there are other needs that would be better met in person. So, so this is an investment on our part to support local, local school districts to be able to have the opportunity for their students to participate in person.
I see. So what percentage are you, what do you like, 75, 25 day students and live-ins?
95% boarding to 5% day students is about. So we have a small percentage of day students.
Okay, does anybody on the board have any questions? As they don't have anything they want to say, positive to say, there's no other attendees to the meeting here. I guess people could call in.
Could you, could you describe where that is on Main Street?
Um, yeah. Oh.
It's up at the old lumberyard there, Prescott Lumber, across from the police station.
I got you.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
If I can, can I just add something, Tom?
Excuse me. Go ahead, June.
Tom, I just wanted to add that this, they did already go to the planning board for site plan review approval, which was granted pending, when they, one of the conditions was just adding the lighting to the plan, which they've been working on, and then getting a special exception from the ZBA here. So, but they have gone through that planning board process.
Great. Okay, you know, I kind of wonder, is, that was a lumberyard before, now you're going to have it an academic, and you've got a really beautiful campus across the street. I mean, I don't expect you to make it look exactly like that, but I mean, is it just going to be a parking lot in a commercial building like that?
Um, no, I, I think that right now we were working to, to do, complete the renovations inside the building. The classrooms are, it's just, it's a, it's beautiful inside for the students. I think that we will, you know, in terms of landscaping or kind of taking care of the outside of the building, I think we would improve the building like we have any other property that we've purchased as far as aesthetics and, and of course within the, within the guidelines of planning and zoning board of Plymouth, so.
You folks own the Hawkinson up in Romney there, too?
Yes, we do.
That building looks great.
Well, thank you. That's, yeah, that's, and that's, again, you know, credit goes to Lacy Hunt and his, his team guys. So it's, you know, the work's done by, by, you know, by our maintenance team, which, you know, do a great job. So we, you know, we continue to try and improve properties anywhere, anywhere that we are. That's in line with our founder, who, you know, kind of instilled that in the organization years ago.
Okay. Yeah, because that's a really nice institutional road there. Does anybody else have any comments here or questions?
I have a question. That's a large building. So I was wondering if you give us a rough estimation, what you think in the next five years that enrollment might get up to?
Um, I think that we, I, I think that we would maybe be 25 students would probably be the max for that, for a day student population. And, and what I can say about that is that pre-COVID, over the years, we've ranged anywhere from 10 to 15 students that we had in, across the street at 354 Main Street at our other campus. And so it's, it's not our main enrollment, but it provides an opportunity for student, to support, preventing students from becoming residential students. And it also supports students in their transition from residential treatment home. So it allows them to kind of take a bite out of the apple instead of eating the whole apple. So they might move home and they're living at home in their community, but they stay with us for school and then we, and then we transition the school piece second. So, um, so, so I would say the number is, I would say, you know, roughly 25 students, but our average has probably been, you know, I would say anywhere 14 to 16 students over the past, you know, few years.
Anybody else?
May I ask a question, please?
What are you doing?
I was going to ask about, I know in your application, you said you weren't going to bring residential students across the street, you know, by walking. Do you ever envision having residential students in that building going across the street for school? And if so, how do you, how do you plan on getting them there? Are you going to drive them there?
So, um, the, the plan is to not have residential students attend the school per se classes. But we do hope to have some experiential classes there eventually, so that would be like a buildings trades class. And so what happens with our residential students is, is that they're picked up at their campuses and then transported by vehicle. So, so we would do the same, that our plan right now is to do the same, is to have them transported. So although it's so close to Plymouth, we also have students in Camden and Romney. And so like the Creative Development Center in, in Romney, our, our faculty, like our automotive teacher will pick up the students and then transport them by vehicle to the, to their class. So yes, we would, we, we still would use transportation.
Just curious.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All set, Steph?
Yes.
So did the planning board talk, are you going to talk about putting like a, a crosswalk there or a flashing light or anything?
So, well, Lacy, do you want to talk, Lacy's been in touch with Department of Transportation, so.
Yeah, so I have had a conversation with David. He's the representative for our district from the Department of Education. We talked about it. It's nothing we're going to do right now. He is, he knows it's something we might do moving forward, not in the near future, but it is something I've talked to him about. We have all the correct permits for what we're doing now. So as of right now, no, we don't plan on that, but who knows, the same, a year and a half, two years, we want to go ahead and look into that. That's something we would be looking into.
Great.
Great. Anything else?
Is there any letters of support or opposition from neighbors?
Were there any letters from the neighbors or anything?
I didn't receive anything.
No?
No, we did not receive anything.
Right. Great. Well, I mean, they were probably like close to public here. Is anybody else, we haven't got any other pros, we haven't got any other cons here?
So, did you, did you open the public hearing?
Yeah.
Normally?
I opened it up, but, yeah, when I read the notice.
Oh, did you? Okay, sorry. I missed that.
So, okay, we'll close the public hearing, 7:15. And let's talk about, what do you folks think? Anything, want to move right on to the criteria here?
Tom?
Yeah?
I think it's a very good repurpose of, of a building that's stand vacant. And we should be ready to hear more of people who want to repurpose some property that's been abandoned. I think it's excellent.
I agree. And, you know, geez, I just hate to be like that, but, you know, they're, I know that these guys, they've got a great track record. Their places, buildings look good and they get in there and they pick them right up. And I just wish there was some way that we could see that this was going to be landscaped, so it doesn't look like an old lumberyard that got turned, I mean, I know they got the cell phone towers out of there, the radio dishes, but it's, I don't know, I just don't want it to, you know, look like the prison up there or anything like that.
Yeah. I, well, if I could add, we don't want it to look like that either. So, so I, I think that that will happen pretty quickly. And, and our, you know, our, our maintenance crew is kind of quickly switching to landscaping. We've kept them busy in buildings during COVID. But that, you know, we would like to have a fence similar to what we have across the street. Certainly adding some greenery. We've talked about some garden boxes. And so I think those, you know, those things will also be related to the students participating in, in the development of those. I can tell you that Jesse Godeoso, formerly, her maiden name is Supergi, is the academic director for the building. And, and she's been in conversation with the students and they actually had part in designing what the classrooms currently look like, although it happened remotely. And so I, and she's itching to, to have, you know, to have some nice landscaping flowers and, and to make it look nice. So we will do that.
Very good. Okay, appreciate that. Okay, so move on to the, what do you call it, special criteria, huh? Number one, the proposed use shall be only allowed in this ordinance by special exception.
True.
Yeah.
True.
True. Four, specific site is in appropriate location or of adequate size for the use.
True.
True. True.
Four, me too. The use is developed will not adversely affect the character of the area in which the proposed use to be located.
True.
That's right across the street, yeah.
True.
Okay. Uh, there'll be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
True.
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 Me too. The use will not play excessive or undue burden on town services and facilities.
True.
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 Me too. All right, so let's take a motion on this.
I move we approve the application.
And a second?
Second.
Butch seconded it? Whoops, sorry, Steph, you've got it. So it's David and Butch seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, you've got your special exception, Mr. Marshall. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you. We appreciate it.
The next one is from Three Lakes Property. Oh, you should leave them a business card. Three Lakes Property LLC, 10 Hamilton Way, PID 213012044. Through us agent Colby Lenantine for variance for Article 3, Section 304 of the zoning laws to construct a structure with a post and beam gable porch, which would encroach 1 foot 6 inches into the property setback. This property lies in industrial commercial zone. And who's here to speak for Three Lakes Landscaping?
Good evening. My name's Colby Lenantine.
Oh, good evening, Colby.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great.
Sorry, the best computer in the house seems to be my eight-year-old son's.
That's all right, as long as he's in control.
Okay. Yeah. Um, so should I just start off talking about what I'm trying to do or how do we proceed?
Sure, that would be great if we could just get a little summation. We read your article here and we get the idea that it's 18 inches we're talking about.
Correct. So I'm trying to add a roof structure off of the north side, the Tenny Mountain Highway side of the property. And within that, I wanted to put a dormer over the existing doors on that side of the road. So I have a quick picture. I don't know if that's, you can see where I'm trying to center the dormer over this structure. So that's where my issue lies, is that the dormer extends a foot and a half into the setback by 13 feet wide. So I'm trying, what I'm trying to do is do something functionality for the business, but also facelift in what my eyes is kind of like a cardboard box of a building. You know, it was just a kind of put up quick for, you know, it was a retail purpose, but I'm trying to give new character to it. So in part of this, the reason I want the dormer to stick proud of the roof line is because I'm trying to break up the linear line of the building already. So if I was to put the roof on and I wasn't able to extend that foot and a half, then everything's still on that same linear line look-wise. So if it stands proud a little bit, I think it would break it up. So the main purpose for the structure and the reason I'm going right to the setback is, is because I'm going to be displaying like power equipment. I, I'm a Husqvarna dealership and we'll be selling lawnmowers, tractors, snow blowers and that nature. And want to place some of this for sale under, in this location. So the issue starts to kind of ripple is that when you put a piece of equipment for sale, like a lawnmower tractor with a bass, a, a grass catcher on the back, on average, it's like seven and a half, eight feet. Then you come out a little ways and it's a customer walkway. But I'm set back by the post to this roof, which would leave me roughly 20, 2 and 1/2 feet for accessibility in front of the equipment for sale. So that's where I start to fight. The hardship is accessibility, handicap accessibility. Um, you know, it's just not there. So the reason I, another reason I want to put the roof there is to protect the equipment. I mean, I have several thousands of dollars invested in equipment for sale there. It provides me a secure place that will be under, you know, security cameras. I can lock the equipment up there adjacent to the building a lot easier. And really, it's out of the weather. So, you know, keeps the weather, sun fading, that kind of thing off of it as well. And so every, if I step back, then the splashback on equipment, pedestrian walkways during the winter, accessibility, it's more dry space and accessible to the building or to this side entrance, uh, which is going to be one of my main flows of traffic with customers. So ultimately, that's, you know, what I'm trying to do. I guess I did have a little quick rendering in there in the packet, I believe. So I'm really trying to do this as a post and beam structure. I've already working with a barn and builder guy out of Northern New Hampshire that has priced this out for me and is ready to go. So I wanted to do everything with old barn beams and then the archways would be all done as well. So it'd be an open-air post and beam structure that would give a lot of curb appeal and also have these functions for me. Let's see. I don't know if there's any questions, I guess, maybe?
That's just great that you want to do such an artistic thing to your side of your building and make it look so good for the passing public. I'm impressed, I like that very much. I don't know how the other guys are, but go ahead. Any, what else, give me any other questions for Mr. Lenantine?
Um, have you tried thought of any other design? You know, it seems like it's such a small, small foot and a half or whatever it is into the, into the.
So we did, I, we did, truthfully. Uh, if I have another drawing document. So this was my original rendering, how the coop, like this dormer was more up on the roof line itself. But to the nature of the construction and, I don't know, poorly it was put together, cheap, inexpensive it was put together. I, structural load on that building has become an extreme nightmare to the point that I never even anticipated in my, you know, wildest dream. It would be pretty much easier to start over than the engineering costs and then, then just implementation of the construction work itself. I mean, I, I got to face it, that I already got X amount of dollars into a project and, you know, I mean, I'm doing this all myself. It's, I'm not Market Basket. So, I mean, but I, 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 so yeah, that was the issue with trying to do other drawings or other renderings, was structural load puts it all on the roof line. And then that's why the building and the roof line was such a steep angle already is because of, it's just two-by-four construction in the, in the roof, the trusses. And so that's why it's a steep pitch, so that it doesn't carry the, the weight of the snow and sheds it quickly.
I understand. So anybody else have a question? Nope. Stephanie, okay. Um, well, that's interesting. So that's, that's so structurally, they are kind of limited. They, so actually you had to make this, this dormer actually kind of supports it on its own structure, on its own post and beam and.
Correct. We, we had debate on, you know, applying the application before because if I hold up this picture, you could actually build this as a free-standing structure. It's really how I'm going to build it anyways because of structural load. So all the, actually, sorry, carry here and here of the building, the only thing that ties it to the building is the metal for the roof and this little cricket.
Yeah.
So, uh, you know, I, but this is where we ended up trying to present my case. I had done this prior with the building on the east side entrance with the pergola. Uh, sorry, I was just finding a drawing. I had it somewhere here. So, I mean, this is my main entrance right now to the property. And I went through this, I mean, I, it, I don't know. I, it seems like the same sort of thing attached to the building. Uh, not trying to cause any problems, but was just trying to explain everything going on, I guess. So, I mean, it's a sort of this, on this side of the building, the roof would attach coming around.
Well, that's great. We're glad to hear that you've tried some other alternatives there. You've got some logic behind this thing. Well, is any other questions? Uh, with that, I'll bet you're all set with you and we'll close that part and we'll take any questions from the audience, which there isn't any. Anybody for it? Anybody new it, against it? June, you want to make any comments? No. Okay. Well, we're going to do a findings of facts for variance.
Tom? Before you launch it, I think the board should discuss this before you start with findings of fact.
Oh, sure, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I got a question for the planner. I've, I've looked at the diagram submitted. It shows the setback goes out and around this new structure. How, how did that happen?
On, on the.
No, the question was for the planner.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um. You can, you can hear me, right? Check my microphone. I'm looking at the diagram here. So, uh, let me, maybe the best thing if I did a quick screen share, if I can, here. Is this what you mean? So the set, it has to do with the shape of the lot because it's not a rectangle. The lot's got a funny shape to it. So when you go along this line, you're going to have to go 30 feet back because it's got frontage on Tenny Mountain Highway. And this, because it's a corner lot, it has two front yards. So it's also 30 feet from Hamilton Way is the setback along this side. But this dotted line that you're seeing here is the setback. So it's 30 feet along the north side, which goes or parallel to Tenny Mountain Highway and then 15 on the side. Does that make sense?
Yep, it does. Thank you.
It's kind of an odd-shaped lot, which is kind of confounding the problem a bit. And, um, you know, that's the way the subdivision was done years back. So we've done a fair amount of looking at the files and it's, it's a complex site and for a couple of reasons, but.
So it is a lot and has two setbacks on that building.
Could I also add one more thing to that that impacts, that's another setback, is that on the parking lot side, where the propane tank was, that drops drastically right off the floodplain. So I'm really, you know, I have impact issues on all three sides minus going forward towards Tenny.
Thank you. Anything else, David?
Yeah, I, uh, the, the problem is a man-made problem. It's not, it's not a land problem. The, the problem is a manmade problem. It's not, it's not a land problem. It's, it has to do with the positioning of the building on the lot. And that's a manmade problem, not a natural problem. If he were to just move the cupola back, apparently it would be, it would be fine.
He, as I understand that he's saying that he needs that space for the way he's bringing his machines into the barn.
And I disagree because that's, that's a human problem. That's not a land use problem. I, I disagree. We can't, we can't, we can't legislate against the zoning ordinance. And the zoning ordinance is clear at thirty, at thirty feet.
Okay, so you're saying that this, this existing building. Because he's got, uh, slopes on some sides and he's got only so much feet to the road. That. If he, that he can't encroach on the setback for fifteen, for eighteen inches. Because there doesn't seem to be these things that he listed aren't adequate hardships.
Correct. There isn't, there isn't one. He could do it all. He could do it all within the thirty feet.
Well, the hardship created is by as I can't have equipment displayed. And have handicap accessibility into the building.
Okay. Um, great. Who else? Any other conversation? Okay. Okay, so can we go on findings of facts? Any problem with that? Okay. So, uh, the use is allowed in that area. In that zone. Uh, the lot is a corner lot subject to setbacks on two sides. Everybody agree with this? I'm not making these up here.
Yeah, so far so good.
Speak up if you know. Okay, uh. Don't anybody else step up now? Feel free, give us a finding of fact here. There's a slope on the back end. On the opposite end. Lot slopes down a floodplain.
Building could be constructed within the setback.
It could be constructed within the setback, setback?
Yes.
Well, I think that he's got a, uh, a good looking design from the street. This dormer has a definite improvement to the building. And will look nice from the street. And I think that he demonstrated that he looked into whether alternatives for this. Alternatives were investigated. Come on, who else has one there? Come on, Steph.
Do you want to make a finding of fact about the, um. The thirty foot setback that the building would encroach into the setback?
Oh, it's, it's being encroached into the setback only eighteen inches or their plan encroaches the setback eighteen inches. Come on, Butch.
Nobody's, uh. None of the neighbors have, we haven't had anybody oppose this at all. Nobody's opposed it.
Oh, yeah, nobody's opposed it. No letters from the neighbors. Okay, you know, Dave, uh. I know you got your technical definition there. I, uh, I think it weighs to me that, um. These guys tried three different ways to try to do what they wanted with their great big building on their great big lot. And the lot is where it is on the setback on the building. They inherited that. And, uh. I'm impressed if they tried other choices and also that they put up the dough and they came in here and they also had to go to the planning. And I don't know exactly where the, um. Where the injustice is here.
Well, you, you and I are gonna disagree on that.
Oh, that makes it easy.
If some, if someone, yeah, right. What else is new?
Four members.
If, uh. If someone can comply, I think it's our obligation to hold them to the, hold them to the rule like we do everybody else.
Yeah, I could definitely understand that.
If the reason they can't comply is a land related issue, we can grant a variance. But this is not a land related issue. This is a man created issue.
Yeah, but you can't go back and change where the building that the.
Exactly right. Exactly right. By man. That was not put there by nature.
Yeah. Yeah, well, we used to, we used to go hard on that, uh. Uh, natural. Problems with the lot. Okay, does everybody agree with these, uh, eight? Uh, findings of facts. Want me to go through them again?
You're gonna ask us to vote on each one?
Oh, we could do that. I thought we all agreed on them as I was putting them down there. Oh, actually. Okay, here we go. Uh, the elusive, the usage allowed is in that, is allowed in that zone?
Yes.
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 Uh, the corner lot, uh. The co- it's a corner lot and has setbacks on two sides.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, it slopes to the floodplain at the back end.
Yes.
Uh, it could be constructed within the setback.
Yes.
The dormer looks, looks nice from the street. He's talking about breaking up the line of the long roof and I think that's nice and. Quite frankly, the artistic end of that is kind of thing that we, well, looking for. And it's, it's a premium. Uh, dormer looks nice from the street. Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Problem I have with that, Tom, is I don't believe it'd look any different extended or not extended. It would look nice.
That's probably true.
If, oh, you mean if he fixed it up with the way that was not in the setback there?
Correct.
Okay, so what do you want me to do? You want to, we got, how many people like this dormer looks, will look nice in the street?
Yes, it would look nice from the street.
One, two, three to one. Although that's not what, uh, okay, alternatives were investigated.
Don't we all have to agree on it for it to be a finding of fact?
So which state, Steph?
Don't we all have to agree on something for it to be a finding of fact? I don't know that we vote on individually.
For it to be a finding of fact. Like it's not unanimous.
Well, uh, the truth is that it only takes one negative vote here. And, um. That's right. If we don't agree on one of the findings of facts. Then that can hurt further on. Which one don't you like? The dormer looks nice in the street? We've got three to one. That's the first one that we're kind of three to one.
If you were to reword it, I could be in favor of it. A dormer.
A, a dormer would look nice in the street. That's, that, that sounds good.
I can accept that.
Dormer would look nice.
Yes, it would. I.
Okay, then we're all four to four there. Dave, you all right?
I'm fine with that. If you've used the word A.
A dormer would look nice in the street. Good. Uh, alternatives sites were investigated.
Alternative plans, maybe, do you want to say, instead of sites? Cause I don't think he's gonna build this somewhere else.
Oh, excuse me. You're right. Alternative. Plans.
Yeah.
Were investigated.
It might be better time to add the word construction in there.
Um, alternative construction was point was. Was investigated. Alternative construction was investigated. It's only a fact. Okay.
Yep.
Three.
Yes, for me.
Yeah, nods. Okay. Uh, the plan encroaches on the setback by about eighteen inches.
Yes. It's true.
Yeah.
Yes, true.
Uh, nobody opposed and, uh, no letters from the neighbors. Correct.
Right.
Okay. Great. So we've got, uh, moved to accept the findings of facts, I guess.
Make a motion to approve them.
Okay, second, Stephanie? All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay, great. Okay, so now we can go on and get the, uh, the variance, the criteria for the variance. June, you have any comments, Dallas?
Um, you know, I, I think you've come up with some good findings of fact. You guys know the criteria as well as, as well as I do, so, um. You know, I, I think there's obviously gonna be some, some concern or discussion about the, the issue of. You know, what the cause of this is, as David has raised, so.
Oh, did anybody understand that? Would you say that again?
Do I, me to say it again or David?
Would you say it again?
I just said that, uh, there's, you know, uh, um, I think there'll be some discussion about the idea of. What the cause of this is, as David had described, is it caused by? The site and the land itself or the building and, you know, kind of people or. Or the environment, um, which, which is that cause of it. So I'll let you guys decide that through.
Well, that'll come up at the end. We've got to vote on the criteria there, you know, so. Okay, anything else? And so we'll vote on the criteria. Oh, yes. Okay, granting the variance will not diminish the value of surrounding properties.
True.
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 True. Four. The variance will not be contrary to the public interest.
I hate this one. I hate this one. It's a double negative, right? Always gets me.
Was that a true, Stephanie?
I, I don't believe it's true.
Okay. Okay, Stephanie?
It's contrary to the public interest.
The variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Right, I know. These are all really worded like that.
I know. This one's always tough for me. Let me just think it through for a minute.
Which?
True.
Okay, one. I, I'll say true, just to be contrary to the public, just to be contrary. No, really, who, we got two other ones here. What, you think it's true too, Steph?
Yeah.
Okay, Dave, you think it's false?
I do.
Okay. Okay, denial of the variance would result in an unnecessary hardship to the applicant upon proof that. The zoning restriction is as applied to the applicant's property interferes with the applicant's reasonable use of the property. Considering the unique setting of the property in the envi- in its environment. There you go. Who's gonna lead this one off?
I'd say true.
Okay.
I don't believe there's a hardship.
False.
You don't believe that's a hardship, Dave?
I don't believe it's a hardship, no.
Okay. Which?
False.
What?
False.
False?
Right.
Okay.
Well, I think it's, I think it's true. Uh, the applicant's reasonable use of the public property. I think he's got a big lot and a lot of land. But not in the right places, they say. It's like here. Okay, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purposes of the zoning ordinance. And a specific restriction on the property. Hmm, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purposes of the zoning ordinance. And the specific restriction on the property.
Can you read that one more time?
Sure. No fair and substantial relationship exist between the general purposes of the zoning ordinances. And the specific restrictions on the property.
I think that statement is false.
I think that's false.
You think that's false?
I do.
Butch, what do you think?
Yes.
Oh, look at that. Okay. Three, false. Okay, that's false. So I'll go along with that. That's four. Uh, the variance would not injure the public or private rights of others.
I think it damages the public right.
Possibly could. That's a, that's a, I, I feel like, I don't know. I think that's a tough one, you know, with the road. I think that, that that's false.
The variance would not injure the public or private rights of others.
I think that's false.
Yeah.
You think it would just because it would be a road in the, uh, variance?
Right, right.
We hold other people to the same standard.
Okay.
False for me too.
Okay, and Steph, where'd you vote on that?
I said false.
You said false too?
I did.
Okay, well, the chair goes along, I guess, but. Granting the variance would do substantial justice. This doesn't look good. Good, Dave.
No, I don't think so. We treat, we, we should treat everybody the same way. That's justice.
Steph?
It's a, it's such a big term for this one, right? I think this is a tough one for me. Yeah. What is justice, right? That's like a.
Do substantial justice. So you think that's true?
I'd say true.
Okay, you think so? I think so too.
False for me.
And Butch thinks no. Okay, the use will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance.
Can you read that one more time? The use will not be contrary to.
Once you read it again?
Oh, sure. The use will not be contrary to the spirit of the ordinance.
Spirit and intent.
Spirit and intent of the ordinance. Oh, excuse me. The use will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the ordinance. No, I think the ordinance has to be a little friendlier here, but that's, that's, I understand both sides of that. I'm gonna say it's true, but.
False for me.
False for Butch.
I think false.
You think it's false too? I'm, I'm voting again, Dave. Okay. Okay, so we've got that. The, uh, actually. As this sets, there, you cannot lose one of these. So, uh, anybody want to make a motion?
I will. I move that the, the variance be denied.
And we got a second?
Second.
And Butch. And all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Four. Sorry, Koby. Yeah, that variance got denied. Shrink it down and good luck with it.
I'm sorry, Koby.
So do I have to go back to the zoning board to be within my setback?
No, if you're in your setback, you don't have to worry about it.
So. I guess I don't see the difference between the pergola and the roof that I wanted to do. Of what's already built, which was over. Of what's already built, which was over a setback anyhow.
What, your existing building is over a setback?
Oh, that thing.
Pergola that I had approval for.
Oh, yes, oh, I see. How'd that get approved and being that that was in the setback area?
It is, they.
By this board, we did that?
So, it was a spe- that was approved two years ago, or September. But I, the difference is I filed as a special exception. Which then rippled into definitions and what's what and what's what, but I the, my understanding was the difference is one's attached to a building and the other isn't.
Oh, I see.
And that's what splits up the difference between a variance and a special exception?
I don't know, so you basically got approval for that, but you never built it, is that what it is?
No.
No, that's, that's built.
Yeah, it's there, it looks nice.
Can I help clarify, Tom, can I help clarify on this one?
Yeah, of course.
So, um, I don't know what happened, you know, a couple of years ago, cause I wasn't working for the town then, but, oh yeah, there it was a special exception granted for that that structure, and the determination at the time by staff was that it was listed as an accessory structure. And accessory structures are allowed within the setback area by special exception. Um, or I guess it's within a certain limit, but um, so, but the definition of a accessory accessory structure. It says it's subordinate to and detached from, you know, the principal structure. So because the way that he was presenting this one as, you know, the roof line coming down over clearly is attached. Um, and that's where staff made the determination, it needed a variance versus a, not a special exception, so. I hope that helps explain it. But that's, that's where we, you know, we we read that, we have to interpret the ordinance every day in different ways, and that's, that's what we decided for this, so that's why he was here tonight for a variance, not a special exception.
Thank you, June.
Okay, Kobe? Hey, I wish I could say it made it simple, but it kinda doesn't.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, good luck with it. Uh, okay. Any other business here, we got ten minutes of eight. And uh, oh, we can go on to reorganization, wanna go back to reorganization? And uh.
What does that mean, Tom?
Excuse me?
What does that mean?
What, that we're gonna go back to reorganization?
The reorg- to reorganize, aren't we organized?
I think we need a chair, David, is what he's.
Oh, you wanna elect a chair, I see.
Yeah, I'm gonna elect a chair and a vice chair. And uh. I don't know, I wouldn't, I think I would run, I would give uh Patrice some competition here.
That'd be great.
It's uh, I know it's not the kind of job you fight for, I was a little bit, I was quite frankly, I uh, I was kind of surprised that she put a letter into the editor about supporting the local uh John Randall out there, and she had some good feelings about the town meeting, I can understand that, but you know, when I was on this board a few years back, we got in a big fight with the selectman. And it was a little bit painful on both sides, that they wound up suing us, and we wound up having to get an attorney. And they were really trying to tell us what to do. And we had about, at the time, we had about seventy-five years of experience for the four members that were on the board, and you know, after that, anyhow, the point is that you have to be this, the zoning board is an island by itself. And we do not have affinities with the planning board or the selectman. Nobody influences the way we should come into these meetings. And I thought by her taking the, you know, supporting John right out in the open there, it's kind of, I had to stand with this other Ted guy who was running at the time, and when I told him I was on the planning board, I kinda felt like, well gee, he probably thinks that I not a big, so not a supporter either, you know? And that's just, I I just think that was a little faux pas on Patrice's fault. That's uh, so anyhow, I would put my name in, I don't know if I'd get a second or what, but we can put this off until next week if you want, or next meeting.
No, I don't think we need to do that.
No.
I I'd second you, Tom, for for a chair, I think that'd be great.
That's scary. Uh, okay, so we got a second, and who else, anybody else gonna?
Put their hat in the ring?
Is, did Patrice ask to run?
I don't, I don't know, I mean, she's done it very well for three years, I mean, I would nominate her to be vice chair, that's certain.
She did not respond about this in any way that I saw, so.
Okay. I don't like getting nominated, but I'm not there.
Butch, you wanna be vice chair?
No, thanks.
What about you, David?
What do you think, Steph?
What about you, that's right, you'd be perfect. And then you can wind up with a chair, when I get sick, you'd be praying for my health.
I was thinking, David, you'd be, I think you'd be good at that, David.
Yeah. Yeah. I have no doubt. Okay, what do we got, what do you wanna do?
I move, I can't do it, I'm a candidate now.
I move that David be the vice chair, do I have to move for Tom to be the chair? I don't move that Tom is the chair and moving forward, and David is the vice chair. How long is that term for chair, is it just one year?
I think it's seven years.
One year, I think we do about a year.
That's pretty good.
Seven years.
We'll do it until like next town meeting. Okay, all those in favor, uh, Tom and David?
Hi.
Hi. That's the two, three, Dave, vote for yourself or what?
Oh, thanks.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, all four. Well, there it is. Let it be marked and spelled. Okay, folks, any other business to come? Oh, I I wanted to say something about uh. I don't know if any of you got uh my email, but and the uh, this is kind of peculiar to me, I felt funny because this thing, I wound up dealing with this selectman who anyhow, I told you about that. But the other thing is that this guy who bought my land has had a Trump sign down there, and you're supposed to take the political signs down within like ten days after the election. And, you know, I have people asking me, you know, they think it's still my land. And, you know, not that that has an influence, but I mean, Julia, anybody gonna write this guy a letter or anything and ask him to take his sign down?
So, um, I would say, Tom, in general, we are looking at some code enforcement issues around town um and a number of sites, so we can um look into this one and and look at what um, what the rules are and 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 try to figure out, I'd have to look at where it is and who the owner and that kind of thing, but I can add it to the list. We are trying to make some effort on code enforcement um in the coming months ahead, so we had a conversation with the um, we've had some conversation with staff, we have um a new building inspector that just started today, Scott Whedon is uh gonna be coming in to do building inspecting um code enforcement and continuing his roles, emerg- emergency management. So he's part-time, um but it's sort of, you know, overlapping with Brian for a few weeks here to get up to speed on things, so.
Well, um, we we had also uh talked about junkyards in the town.
Yeah.
And the fact that we have to get after that.
We could really get after that, especially out on Tenny Mountain Highway.
Yes.
It looks horrific.
Yeah, you can't, if you read the statute, there's no way that's not a junkyard.
So like I said, we are looking at a variety of properties around town, and we, you know, it's not a fast process, but uh, you know, we we wanna make sure we do it right, uh and have all the proper records and documentation, so um, it, so if this end, you know, if any, if any situation where a number of different properties ended up in court, we have we have the um records to be successful, is my main goal with it, so.
Um, also, the guy. The guy who was there back in November or whenever it was, with the forty-foot setback, uh that that building still hasn't been moved. The shed.
Well.
Hasn't been moved?
Not to get that on the list after cleaning up the junkyards and getting rid of the old campaign sites.
Well, I think if the board sets criteria, the criteria should be followed, that's all.
That's true. He is still working on that property, you know what I mean, but, yeah.
That's all.
Okay, well, that's about it, I mean, that's, I don't know what else we can do, June gave us the word that that's gonna be getting dealt with, and
Good.
No, I I would say it's gonna be a slow process, so it's not like something we can take care of everything next week, so we're kind of ramping up on it, so give us still a little more time, but again, we're gonna have a little bit more staff support for that with with new people involved, so.
We appreciate your efforts, June.
I also would like to thank June for her her planner's document coming into tonight's hearing, that that was helpful.
Well, actually, Jules did a lot, I mean, the staff reports, Jules did a lot of putting that together too, so we kind of she drafted it and we made a few edits and then.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jules.
Team effort. I give you a pat on the cold back, but it's COVID, you know?
Okay.
Okay.
Take a rain check. So I, Tom, I had one thing I wanna talk about, just the zoning ordinance in general, um and just if you can give me a few minutes, if people are willing to stick around, is that alright?
Yeah.
Um, so we had had a meeting, or tried to have a meeting, I guess, I think it was in February, and only Patrice showed up, cause whatever, but we wanted to try to talk about um amendments to the zoning ordinance, the planning board, you know, had brought forth some for this year, and uh there was some pushback, so they have, they did not pursue those, um they kind of, I didn't wanna say table them, they just dropped them, decided not to go ahead, since I've come on board. Um, you know, and in working with the ordinance on a daily, weekly basis, you know, I'm seeing a lot of the same problems that were there years ago, haven't, are still there, and maybe even worse, um in terms of definitions, trying to understand things, so. Last, I guess it was last week, I did, when our planning board work session, I tried to focus the planning board on understanding some, what was more the administrative stuff in the ordinance that we struggle with. Um, if you bear with me for a couple minutes, I wanna actually show you the slides that I showed them, because it seemed like it went over pretty well and trying to get some clarity. You guys are more familiar with the ordinance, so you probably um don't need quite the, I can go through this a little bit more quickly. So, let me, um, let's see. Whoops. Okay, so this is, I start off by just talking to them about the ordinance in general, um and that really where we struggle with this, and I wanted to get some input. I guess why I'm showing this to you guys is I wanna get input from zoning board members around any areas of the zoning ordinance, as you try to make interpretations when you're doing your work of granting variances and special exceptions, reviewing applications. Where do you see problems, where do you wanna have the the ordinance work better for you? And this is a little bit different than getting into arguing about different types of land use and what uses should be permitted, I wanna think about more um, kind of defining these areas of definitions, non-conformity, general provisions, just overall organization. And what kinds of newer uses may be coming, and this, that newer uses is probably more of a planning board function. Um, so I've gone through the list of the table of permitted uses and have identified, we list a bunch of different types of unis that are not defined in the zoning ordinance, there's another one that came up just today, we were arguing about, so. You know, I wanna continue to work on this, and this is kind of starting to build um some pretty substantial revisions around these administrative functions. Um, revisions to the zoning ordinance, hopefully for town meeting a year from now. So I'm kind of trying to start laying the groundwork for this, and and again, it's areas where we need to do this to to make it work better, so these are just one, some lists of things, there'll be others to add, again, this is just kind of a first cut at this. Um. Non-conformity, we talk about um existing lots of record, you know, basically if you have a a lot that isn't um say like only a half an acre, when the, when the lot um size is requiring an acre, you know, it still is buildable, and that's a normal thing to have in your zoning ordinance, as long as you can meet setbacks and other considerations. So, um, there's probably another way we can, there might be some changing and kind of um cleaning up some some language in this, but I we do have this, um that existing lots that are non-conforming can be built upon, okay? However, this is a little bit finer text, but I wanted to point out that we have a section that's about non-conforming uses. But within that, we start talking about um non-conforming structures and five, five oh, four oh, five point three. But a structure is different than a use, and we don't address non-conforming lots in this, so we really should have a section about um, we kind of have that about non-conforming lots on the other side, but it, there may be, this came up a couple of weeks ago, somebody basically has um, a couple of contiguous lots, and they wanna try to make um, one has a fair amount of frontage, and they wanna be able to make the other one less non-conforming, but it would still be non-conforming, so we need to have some language about how do you address that? What if you wanted to add, do a lot line adjustment to add some land to a lot that might still be under that one acre size? So it's less non-conforming, but it's still be non-conforming, can you do that? We're kind of silent about that in the ordinance. Um, so this part about is really should be addressing uses that don't comply with zoning, that are non-conforming, that may be grandfathered. And then we have a separate section about structures, you may have a structure in a setback, and then try to address how you could put an addition on that, and what sides, and that kind of thing. So again, it's just kind of a messy area for people to try to interpret, and certainly for us, cause you have to kind of flip back and forth, and half the time you can't find the answer. So it makes it um very time-consuming in the office, and just lacking clarity. Um, this is again accessory structures, we have some real kind of conflicting area where one's part says you can't build um, no structure can occupy any part of the yards, and then another place it says, oh, but you can put an accessory structure by special exception in there, so those two areas, and I haven't read are really saying, the first one says, the first bullet there basically implies you need a variance, and the other one says um, if it was accessory building, oh, you actually can do it by special exception. But they need to be brought together and brought, put in clarity, and not have them in two different, you know, multiple pages, so you can't um, and just having clarity, one statement about how we're gonna deal with these things. Um, fences are like a great one, because the ordinance has been amended at different times to try to address, I think it's fences under four feet, and there's another thing today I found about fences somewhere else in the ordinance, that's not even on here. Um, but uh, you know, basically, we say that um fences can go in the side. Um, but as long as it's under four feet, but then on the other, on the other side of the screen here, we define a fence as something kind of different, we don't really specify the height part of it. You know, so uh, you know, is it, is it an accessory structure or not, can it be within the setback or not? Can it be right over the property line, is it, is it about six feet or four feet? Again, there's just conflict, conflicting um information here, which lacks clarity and makes it hard for people to understand. Um, this is one that, this is maybe more of a new um kind of use that's emerging, uh we literally in about fifteen minutes, one day last week, I had two questions from different, different people asking about storage containers, so a lot of people are looking to store stuff, apparently. Are they a building, are they accessory building or not, um again, we call accessory building something affixed to the ground, attached to the ground, these really aren't. But they actually function like a shed. Um, so a lot of towns address this by only um like giving them a certain timeline for having a storage container, maybe you can have it for three months or something on your, you know, in your yard, you're renovating your house, that makes sense, but if it's just to store your stuff. Um, you know, we don't want storage containers to be popping up, I don't think, all around town, and we do there, if you drive around town and start looking for storage containers, there's a lot of them, but we don't really know what they are, we don't really define what they are, how they fit the terms. So this is one area, I would say, um, we have a section that's related to construction only, but not just kind of personal storage or businesses storing. Um, there's a lot of businesses that have these kind of around out back, it's always good to drive around out back in property of businesses. Um, so yeah, these are types of newer units, we don't have a definition for storage units, um actual, you know, the kind of rental units. We kind of define it under commercial service, and maybe that's okay, but I, it might be good to put that listed in there just for clarity, cause that's a newer use. We don't really define kennels, um, I really believe we should have a recreational campground kind of thing, and it might not even need to be called recreational vehicle campground, cause there's other types of camping uses emerging. With, you know, just a lot of, lot more interest in outdoor recreation, and we have some properties where people might be wanting to do that, um and there's now a lot more venues through like, you know, personal websites and like, you know, short-term rental kind of websites where you can um advertise even sort of campsites for um on your property, and so you don't, it kind of becomes a business use, but uh we don't really define what needs to be done. So the main thing there is if it's in a floodplain area, there's a lot of safety concerns, what is the water and sewer capacity of a site to handle, so. Um. We, you know, drive-through service that came up recently, is it, can it be a primary use, or does it have to be accessory? Um, and we have nothing about short-term rentals, about Airbnb types of things in town, so this is again, these are kind of areas where I'm on the planning board to make some decision about these types of uses, um not so much for you guys. Um, the other one is housing units, again, maybe thinking about, um, again, this is more of a planning board one, but uh you know, do we wanna start to allow more than six units in a building? Because that has some real limitations for housing. A lot of housing types of things are changing and housing needs are changing and housing demand is changing a lot. So um, do we want to make some changes on that? Um, again, the other one is I'm thinking about uh, you know, this case you heard tonight. Um, is it still makes sense as we to require um, corner lots to have two front setbacks? A lot of communities will say, you know, define the address and you have that as the front yard. And then they, and then you can have another side yard. Um, isn't that, so again, different communities do it differently. I just kind of wanted um, some consideration from the planning board on that. So that's what I've got kind of quickly running through my slides there. Um, but especially that first sort of part that I went over about the kind of administrative definitions. Um, we don't, you don't have to give it, you know, we've got till fall, November time to really come up with the zoning amendments. Um, but I would love to hear from you guys um, either in writing or if you want a copy of the ordinance and just to start marking up. Or if you have one, you know, highlighting, circling in red. Mine's getting all marked up with, you know, every time, every day, it's like, oh, this needs to be changed. Or I'd like to define this better. So again, from your perspective, please share any information on where you struggle in particular with interpreting things of the ordinance.
I think you you've uh, you've been off a lot when you start to look at storage units. Because you also have people who use tractor trailers and put signs on them on the side of the tractor trailer. They don't comply with the sign ordinance, so they don't comply with setbacks and don't comply with anything. And they claim because they put a license plate on it, they can do whatever they want. So.
It's on, it's a, it's, it's a tough ball of wax.
The. I also, yeah, okay. I think that one of my pet peeves that I wish our ordinance would enforce in some way is the control of student housing off campus. Because it gobbles up our neighborhoods. And that that's, that's inappropriate. In my view, that's an inappropriate use. Without some sort of control.
People just park all over the lawn, June. Is there any rule about that?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Our dumpsters. The dumpsters are very unsightly too.
Yeah. Um, again, I think there's some ways the town, um. I, you know, I said this probably 15, 18 years ago, that there are ways to address the off street parking on the lawn. Um, and it hasn't been done, in my opinion, you know, so that's a bigger, longer term one. Um, and I regularly go for walks at lunchtime and have for many years. And now that I'm back in this role, it's kind of interesting because I, I'm, I'm looking at these a little bit more closely and puzzled what we can do. Um, I wanted to work with the planning board on adopting some driveway regulations. And I've talked to our highway manager that would control where curb cuts are. Um, another issue is, you know, we have a lot of um, damaged sidewalks and loss of sidewalks. Which is losing our pedestrian infrastructure, which is not good. Um, when people are just kind of pulling in everywhere. So I think that is one area to try to define an access point for any property. And then um, within the ordinance, we also have parking areas with some, you know. Can't be in setback areas that have some specifications for numbers of spaces and that kind of thing. So it's about both controlling how you access the parking lot and establishing where it is. Um, but again, it's an enforcement piece, so.
June, uh, this, obviously, I've observed this for a long time. And do your answer to the previous questions about, you know, junkyards and parking cars and whatever. Is it, it works for from, from, it just seems to me that. You, you can't really bill. I know that you can make one phone call, then you can have a lawyer and you can have 10 letters coming at you and people all over you. And I sympathize with that totally. But on the other side, I think that there's a lot of the, if if the town were to send out 15 or 20 letters to these people. Asking for compliance and not with a heavy threat, but just say, you know, the mood is you're not be, you're not treating your neighborhood well. Dave, you laughing at me or what?
I'm not laughing. I wish it would happen.
I thought you were laughing. That's what you get with a question. No, but it seems though that you could take the the easy fruit, if you may, by just sending out a letter and saying. You know, they get a letter from the town and they say, well, you know, if you're going to be parking all over your front lawn, you're going to have to come in to the planning board. And show a map of exactly where your driveway is. Because we've got, you doubt it's just a little driveway here. And you know, half of the people would comply with this and it would get rid of it without being all ready to go to war with a lawyer and all of that, you know?
Well, and the code enforcement process is you start with a letter, you know, notifying somebody, hey, you know. Like you said, a kind of a friendly letter saying, this is what we've observed as a violation and this is what you need to do to comply. That's kind of the first step. But again, we have to make sure we are, have the proper documentation and dates and all that. It's not, you can't just be like, hey, we, because eventually if it goes to the final end step of court. You know, you want to make sure we have all the documentation in place that we need. So that's where the time comes. But I agree, you know, it's sometimes it's just when we can, you know, we need to do a better job of kind of in a. Positive um, cooperative way, um, ask people to kind of work with the neighborhood a bit better. But um, and protects the town's infrastructure of our roads and sidewalks too, so.
Sympathize.
One of the, one of the issues, June, that that springs the whole parking issue was the number of unrelated people that live. And in an apartment. And the lady came down from uh, was it Lakes Region Planning Council, said, oh, you guys can't enforce your ordinance, that portion of the ordinance, that's unenforceable. Well, let's fix it then, so it's enforceable.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's for a person that's unenforceable. I've heard that before too.
There is other parking for some of those people, right? Like they could park their cars at the university.
That's right.
It's just not convenient parking.
Right. They don't want to walk.
I think the housing, right now, the housing market seems to be changing quite a bit too. So this is also a good time to perhaps um, look where there may be some changes in ownership and try to figure out. Maybe some things will go back to more traditional housing too. I don't know. Um, again, there's a lot to do, a lot to track, a lot to kind of consider, so.
June, but uh, more than a year ago, we denied a guy who wanted to build a high rise building on Jim Smith's old property. We saved that guy a million dollars, uh, you know, given what's happened here. So in terms of number of units and in in a particular building, uh, I don't know if that's what we want to do or don't want to do, but.
Yeah.
That project.
I think there may be ways to say, you know, you over six units, you can, um, you know, maybe buy some. Special criteria for that, that's a little, you know, the by special exception with some additional criteria for those types of buildings. And in terms of location, you know, and again, where they are too, location wise. Um, because you know, we have some, we have some interest in people that want, you know, higher density housing in our downtown area in our community. That and it's a good thing for Plymouth. So again, building in, um, like you said about the, the Mount Prospect case tonight. Reusing a site, making it, you know, big improvements can, can be really good for the community and the tax base. You know, so rather than trying to just keep expanding, expanding and to un, you know, in floodplain areas and other areas, why not? Create that density. Um, that's the way to go as a planning kind of goal. So anyway, I don't want to, you know, get too far. I'm happy to talk about this at any time with any of you individually or. Um, but if you have any notes or real pet peeves in the ordinance, you know, like I kind of listed out, um, please, please think about it. And again, this is an ongoing process. I just kind of wanted to plant the seed, get you thinking about it, so.
Great. Okay, June. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your hard work, June.
Thanks very much. Um, any other comments or anything else? And say the motion?
We do.
All in favor?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.